Earlier under the adoption of the agenda, a motion carried to advance proposal number 195, 2021 for action this evening under final adoption. Proposal 195 ratifies public health orders related to COVID-19. Who will be presenting this proposal this evening? Welcome, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, President Osley. Good evening, and thank you to President Osley and all of our city-county councilors for inviting me to present the new public health order for Marion County. Tonight, I'm very hopeful. Our COVID-19 cases and positivity rate are trending down. Every day, members of our community are making the choice to protect themselves and those they love by getting the COVID-19 vaccine. And last month, the CDC released new guidance for fully vaccinated individuals that makes it clear the COVID-19 vaccine is highly effective in our community's route back to normal. That is why tonight, I am recommending that we lift Marion County's mask mandate for fully vaccinated individuals with a few exceptions. That includes hospitals and public transportation. Those of our residents who have chosen to receive the COVID-19 vaccine can now safely remove their masks in most public settings. This is truly a milestone for the Indianapolis community. In addition, I am recommending a loosening of capacity restrictions. Religious services and funerals will move to 100% capacity. Indoor sporting events will move to 50% capacity. Limits on large gatherings will increase from 50 to 500 people. Indoor service at bars will move to 75% capacity. Personal service businesses will no longer have to be by appointment only, but capacity must allow for six feet of social distancing between clients. The entertainment, cultural, and tourism sites such as our zoo and museums can now host up to 75% capacity. Our gyms, our fitness centers, dance studios, et cetera, can move to 75% capacity. Our libraries will now be at 75% capacity. Community pools can operate at full capacity. And for all you tango dancers out there, and dancing can come back to music venues as long as six-foot social distancing is maintained and clearly marked. Now, this is welcome news, I think, for our community, but it does not mean that this is the end of the pandemic yet. In the marathon to end this COVID-19 pandemic, we can see the finish line, and now is the time to dig deep and sprint to that finish. So let me just say vaccination works best when we do it together, that the more of our community who are vaccinated, the safer we all are. The Health Department will recommend the full reopening of our community. Let me say this again. The Health Department will recommend the full reopening of our community when we reach a rate of 50% fully vaccinated residents and are seeing less than 100 cases per day, and I continue to hope that we can achieve this by the Fourth of July. So we're continuing to focus on breaking down those barriers to the vaccine and educating our residents on its benefits. We have a hotline for those with questions about the vaccine and registration. Please call us at 317-221-2100. We are continuing our vaccine pop-up clinics with community partners. We have invested $1 million total in 86 community-based organizations serving minority residents to promote the vaccine and support our city's continued recovery. We will be offering vaccine incentives such as race memorabilia and gift cards. We are doing neighborhood canvases, digital town halls, and other such efforts to provide education and address the concerns about the vaccine. If we continue to do those things to protect ourselves and those we love from COVID-19, getting the vaccine, washing our hands, and continuing to social distance and wear masks when necessary, the full reopening of our community is definitely within our reach. I will now address any questions you may have.
Before we do that, I'd like to ask if there's a motion on proposal number 195.
Salute.
All right. Proposal's been properly moved and seconded. Counselor Murray.
I'd like to hear the discussion first, but I also have an amendment, Mr. President, towards the end of discussion. If you want to do a discussion first, we're gonna...
Yes. Let's go through the discussion.
Okay. I have a question as well.
Okay.
Thank you. When we look at things such as the vaccination rate, are we looking at... Let me just start this question, actually. When someone tests positive for COVID-19, how long do antibodies show up in their system? Do we know?
So we know that we feel that you're protected for at least 90 days after you have a diagnosis of COVID-19, but there's some more recent evidence that is suggesting that that immunity may last as long as eight to nine months.
So are those people that have already had contact with COVID-19 and they've been diagnosed, are they being at all considered in this number of vaccination because they're... I mean...
So actually, they are not considered in the 50% vaccination rate that we need, but they are considered in that overall 80% of people who are protected for us to reach herd immunity.
So we're making it a little more difficult to reach that 50%.
So 50% vaccination we're requiring, and another 30% are the folks who have a recent diagnosis of COVID-19, and they have a natural immunity related to that. And we estimate that to be about 30%.
On top of the number we're already at with vaccinations?
Yes. So we're thinking that that's about 30%. We have used our partners at the IU Fairbanks School of Public Health to help make that analysis of our COVID-19 data, and they've confirmed that roughly 30% of our community has been exposed to the virus in recent months, and we feel that they are protected.
So with that understanding, wouldn't we be over 60%?
So actually, if we reach the 50% vaccination and we have 30% of individuals in the community developing their natural immunity, we're looking at a total of 80% that we feel reaches our herd immunity for this community.
So are you saying that we need to get to 80%, not 50%?
We need to get 50% for the vaccination rate. We are currently, right now, at 30% overall for our community for being fully vaccinated, and we are 41% of this community that has received at least one vaccine.
So people that are naturally vaccinated through having it are no longer counted as vaccinated?
So for the vaccination rate, I'm asking for that 50% is just related to the vaccine-given vaccinators for vaccination. I'm adding another 30% from the actual diagnosis of COVID-19 diagnosis that gives us natural immunity to get us to a total of 80%. 50% from vaccine-induced antibodies that protects us, and then another 30% from folks who have had an actual infection related to COVID-19, and they have developed natural antibodies as a result of the disease that protects them. So that's a national... That's a natural immunity.
I'll yield my time for now, Mr. President.
Very good. Counselor N.A., and then Counselor Hart, I think.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane, good evening.
How are you, sir?
Thank you for being with us. We talk about the 50% vaccination goal. Could you please speak to just briefly the metrics that are used to find and come up with that 50%?
Yes. So for getting to what some of the scientists say, that a community needs to reach herd immunity, herd immunity means that a certain percentage of the population has to have protection from transmitting the infection to somebody else. And so we have looked at that figure of 80% as our goal for reaching herd immunity for Marion County. And so we came up with, how do we get to 80%? So we looked at, what's the percentage of people who are being infected with COVID-19 as a diagnosis, and as a result of that infection, they develop what we call natural immunity. They develop an immune system with the antibodies that they have developed to prevent them from getting reinfected again, but also it usually prevents them from spreading that infection to somebody else. That percentage for our community was around 30%. So as a result of that 30% of our community that were already starting out being protective, we felt we needed 50% of our community to be vaccinated with a vaccine to develop more people with an immunity or immune system to prevent from spreading COVID-19, as well as protecting those cells from getting infected.
I appreciate that. I'm more interested, as it relates to the 50%, of how do you know that you've gotten to 50%? What metrics do you use to know that you have had 50% of Marion County residents vaccinated?
So thank you for asking that question, so I better understand what you're trying to get at. So we use the Indiana Department of Health's immunization registry system to help determine what our vaccination rate is for Marion County. And we get reports related to that submitted to us from the Indiana Department of Health for Marion County. And the reason for that is, we have all different venues and different vendors and different people providing that vaccination, and it is required to report that to the Indiana Department of Health Immunization Registry, yes.
Thank you. And I just want to be clear, and I'll finish up here in just a moment, that Marion County Board of Public Health is saying that 36% today of Marion County residents are vaccinated, and we're looking to get to 50%. In the 36% that we have today are folks who have traveled to Florida for the winter, the many thousands of Marion County residents who travel to Florida and other parts of our nation to spend time and have received their vaccines out of state, the many thousands, if not, well, many hundreds, if not thousands, of college students who are not attending university in Marion County, but in other parts of our nation. Are they being counted in that 36%? And if they're not, I'm going to guess that we're not at 36%, that we're actually higher, and that the 36% vaccination rate is, in fact, somewhat inaccurate and unreliable as it relates to the 50% that we need to open back up at 100%.
So what I will answer, respond to that is, yes, we have a number of colleges here that have students that may not reside in Marion County, and they may not always get their vaccinations here. But some of the school systems, for example, IU PUI, which is our largest college campus here with 30,000 students, and I think you can add faculty of 10,000 more, they require their students to report to them whether they're... I'm just saying whether they're vaccinated or not, and that information is reported to the State Department of Health. But I cannot tell you that we don't have other students that may be outside, who may not necessarily, as a resident of Marion County, may get vaccinated in their hometowns or whatever, but, and they're supposed to report that to the State Department of Health. But if they're outside the state, no, there could be a number of cases, I grant you, that could be, receive a vaccination, and it may not make it to our immunizations registry.
Counselor N.
And I just, just one last one, Mr. President. So just to be clear, that there are potentially thousands of Marion County residents who received vaccines outside of our state, whether that be in Florida, whether that be at other universities across our nation that have not been included in the 36% that the Marion County Board of Public Health is using.
I don't know that I would say it's in the thousands. I would also say...
It's possible.
It's a possibility, yes. But I would say that the federal government with CDC tries to encourage anybody that's vaccinated, that's from a state, but they may go to New Jersey, they encourage those state registries to report the information to the other states. Let's just say someone... Well, yeah, I guess that's the best way I can say that, yes.
It's an honor system. No guarantee that that information would be reported from state to state.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I yield back.
Very good. Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane, thank you for your time this evening as well, and, you know, members of my constituency and myself, you know, kind of see these mandates as a bit inconsistent. For example, you know, I'm glad that it's safe enough for religious services to be opened up to 100%, but outdoor sporting events are still at 50%. You know, how can we permit somebody sitting at a table without a mask on and having conversation but not walk from a door to a table? Can you explain that scientific approach to me?
So I think you were questioning, if I understand the question, you were saying, how can we have outdoor events just at 50%? Was that the question I got from you, sir?
The main point is, you know, the inconsistencies within the mandates, that we can go to a religious service and have 100% occupancy, but we have to have 50% at an outdoor service is one of the...
Yes. So I can, I'll try to explain that to you. So when we have some outdoor events, and depending on the size and the population density of that, we restrict it to 50% as compared to, I don't know of any church that has that magnitude of a size. I'll give you an example, the Indy 500, like 135,000 spectators, where it's a heavily dense population. And so we are in the process of trying to do an analysis related to that, to see if any impact from a spirit related to that versus the settings of our current churches that we have here, which we don't have huge sizes related to that, that we feel a lot more comfortable, have a lot more experience of faith-based institutions of smaller sizes compared to an outdoor sporting event that could have thousands of spectators that could spread infection.
Mr. President, if I may finish the question, just one more.
Counselor Hart, please.
Thank you, sir. You know, I believe that we should be sending a strong message to our business community and all residents in Indianapolis that we're open for business, and that this is the best place to work and live and play in this country. And I believe that public health order number 12, you know, that only requires unvaccinated individuals to not have to wear a mask, you know, why not just remove the mask mandate for everyone when it's not possible to enforce who is vaccinated and who's not?
Do you want me to respond to that? So here's the issue. We have a lot of young children here under the age of 12 that they don't have the luxury of being able to vaccinate themselves and be protected. So we have to protect our children. So that's the first order. The second thing is, is that we want to prevent a super spread of infection. I think the earliest, when we're balancing the economy, the fact that we can reach a point and reopen without causing a significant amount of spread, where we may have to regroup and put more restrictions there, we are so close to that point. I think easily, and by that July the Fourth date, that I would like to see us reopen, but I don't have to worry about our cases soaring. We are still seeing people being hospitalized every day in our hospitals, in our critical care units. People have died still as a result of that. So this is still a very deadly, life-threatening infection. And I want to fix this so from an economy standpoint, business will really be booming, and they don't have to worry about having a sick employee that may have to be hospitalized or not be there, and they can stay a robust operations in order to keep this whole community safe. We're a different breed. We have a significant population density, population here. We're unlike any other county in the state of Indiana.
My point being is that you just, we cannot enforce who is vaccinated and who is not vaccinated. So by only allowing people who are vaccinated to drop the mask mandate is not plausible to even enforcement. So what's the point of even keeping a mandate if you can't enforce...
Okay. Counselor Hart.
Can I answer that question?
All right. Dr. Kane, you can answer it, but that was the last comment on this proposal.
Yes. I think that there are honorable people, honorable people and responsible people, citizens in Indianapolis, who will take, who will take these recommendations very seriously, and it may not be so much concern for themselves, but they're concerned about their loved ones, they're concerned about their colleagues, they may be concerned about seniors in this community that will take this seriously enough to follow those recommendations.
Thank you. Counselor Boots, and then Counselor Murray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Kane. I think that Marion County Health Department and the administration is to be commended on guiding us through these turbulent times based on science and medicine and not politics and capitalist markets. So to qualify the math here, we're roughly going, we're roughly defining herd immunity as 80%, as I understand.
That's correct.
And so if we have 36 vaccinated, 30 currently immune by infection...
We're currently at about 66% now.
Totally. Correct. So as the number of people, as you mentioned, still dying and getting infected, that 30% number will increase. So should that not decrease our need to hit 50, that maybe if we hit 45 with the current infected immune community, that will reach our 80.
That's a possibility. We will have to relook at our data and what we call our prevalence data at that current time, but we feel that it'll be maintained at least at a 30% level.
Thank you.
Counselor Murray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Kane, you spoke a lot about the deaths and the hospitalizations with concern to COVID. What is the number one cause of death in Indianapolis currently?
What is the number one cause of death in Indianapolis? Probably heart disease.
Are we putting restrictions on people for heart disease?
No, but heart disease is different. It doesn't transmit other heart disease to other individuals. It won't transmit heart disease to a young child, unlike COVID-19.
And then also, I think of places like New York City or Chicago that are fully reopened. They don't have these egregious restrictions. What makes us different from them?
Well, I can't say for New York or Chicago. I can just say for, like, Washington DC, which I looked at that recent data, they had a positivity rate of 2%, and they were seeing less than 35 cases per day. And they were at 50% vaccination rates or higher in those cities. So their vaccination rates are higher than what we're seeing here in Marion County.
You're using Washington DC solely as that example, correct?
See, I'm sorry?
You're using Washington DC solely?
Washington DC is an example because their vaccination rates are higher, and I just recently looked at their data.
So theoretically, nothing...
But I suspect if you look at some of those other, Chicago, for example, if you believe they've reopened completely, I wasn't, I'm not sure that that's the case, but I suspect their vaccination rates are higher, or at least 50% are higher.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor Murray. Counselor Mascari.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call the question.
Motion's been moved and seconded to call the question. Madam Clerk, can you open up the board?
Mr. President.
A motion on the floor right now to call the question. That motion carries 19 to 5. All right, then we will be voting on proposal number 195, which ratifies public health orders related to COVID-19. Madam Clerk, could you clear the board? All right, and then put us back on the board. Counselor N., you've spoken twice.
I did, Mr. President, but I'd like an opportunity for about 20 or 30 seconds to explain my vote.
When we're done with this, you can explain it. All right. The motion carries 19 to 5. Counselor N., please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm disappointed I didn't have an opportunity to ask Dr. Kane a couple more questions, as I think this is an extremely important issue in the life of our city and probably one of the most relevant topics. I voted no today because I believe Marion County and Indianapolis should be back at 100% today. And so unless we see something like that, I will be a nay vote. Until then, I'm glad we're moving in somewhat of the right direction, but until we're at 100%, I'll be a nay.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Yes, Chairman Gray.
Is this the final action that we need to take on this? Once you, once this is passed, then it's official?
It is done.
It don't have to go through the mayor? This is, this makes it official?
That is correct. And so it will be sent to the mayor's office.
It will be?
Yes.
He has to sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Evans, Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that I was happy to support tonight's ordinance to end the face mask for those who have been responsible citizens and have gotten vaccinated. But I will say that I have, I carry some of the concerns moving forward as we go into July about continuing the restrictions. I believe the citizens of Indianapolis, many of which have begun to disregard the public health orders, so it puts us in some conflicting ways. So I hope we take that into account as we move forward. I think the citizens are starting to see things as, if you don't go get vaccinated and you have the ability to get vaccinated, it's on you.
Very good. Counselor Bane.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is more of a procedural question, seeing as how this is my first full council meeting here in the chambers. Is it normal, I probably shouldn't use the term "normal," is it appropriate for us to get a proposal three hours ahead of time, not be able to offer amendments to it, and then for debate to be cut off to where we can't even ask questions?
Fortunately, that is the way our municipal code is written, but for a more, I think, thorough explanation, I will ask our counsel to weigh in. Counselor Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to confirm what President Osley said in answer to your question. Our Muni code does allow for this procedure to go through as it has.
Would you cite, would you cite the statute, please? Cite the number?
Sure. It's Section 15184 in amendments. Any amendments on the council floor have to be in writing and sent to both the president and the clerk and the general counsel.
Very good. Thank you.
Is there anything in the Muni code that deals with the deadline when a proposal can be submitted and is publicly available?
Counselor Bane, there are rules... Counselor Bane, there are rules as to council submission deadlines, but those can be waived at the discretion of the president.
Counselor Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a moment here and also, as well as my fellow counselors here, kind of explain my vote, and also kind of piggyback on Counselor Bane. So are we to understand that we can, we can suspend the rules to allow a proposal to be submitted three hours before it's heard, and then we vote on it with no real discussion, with no amendment possibilities being offered? We can do that, but then when it comes to offering an amendment, we can't suspend the rules for that?
Madam Counsel, would you wait?
Thank you, Mr. President. The time to suspend the rule has passed, so that's not...
If it had not have passed, please.
Sure. That's a proper motion to make.
So in this instance, we just chose not to do that for whatever reason? Is that correct? And then, I'll chance that in here in a minute. You know, one of the things in the amendment that I did want to offer was that we completely lift all mandates, lift all restrictions, let people get back to living their lives, and that was one of the reasons that I voted no on this proposal tonight.
Point of order, Mr. President. You can't talk about amendment now. It's...
I appreciate that. Madam Leader, and...
Which was an explanation of my vote, and if I have the floor, if I may.
You may. If you can, if you can be a little... We're not getting into this.
So you don't want to follow the rules?
Is there any additional comments from counselors? Otherwise, we are going to move on. All right, sing...